All the seniors to order. With your pleasure of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the people of this country, for its standing in the nation, our nation, our God, and the invisible, with the great justice for all. Brocco.
Carr. Carr here. Pittman.
Here.
Pittman here. Slattery. Slattery absent. Hulos. Hulos absent. Johnson. Johnson absent. Frausto. Frausto absent. Bellato. Bellato absent. Yehda.
Here.
Yehda here. Rita. Rita absent. Donahue. Donahue absent. Holly here. Holly here. Farrenwell. Farrenwell absent. Osling.
Here.
Osling here. Thompson.
Here.
Thompson here.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the presentation and water rate analysis. This is right.
Hello, and thanks for having me out. As you all know, my name is David Byer. I'm at CPA firm. I am myself, of course, a CPA. I've been a CPA since 1992. That was a year.
The mic is out. Your mic is not working.
Hello. Is this on?
It's on now.
Okay. Again, I'm a CPA. I've been a CPA since 1992. It looks like we have some duct tape here trying to hold this baby together. How about now? All right. Well, if it fades out again, let me know. Anyway, we put together a presentation for you to discuss the water rates. And this has nothing to do, you've seen this already before. I will go through it again, though, slide by slide. And then we also have a couple of additional new materials. And one of them being this handout that is in color, and I don't know if everyone up there got one. This was from the Chicago Tribune. Put together a water rate study, and it includes 162 towns that use the Chicago water. And you'll see that the monthly water bill, and they use 5,000 gallons as a benchmark for all of the towns in their analysis. And you can see where Blue Island falls. It's the one that's in the black that's just into the yellow area, okay? So your rates are just above the first quartile there. And down below that little schedule, it says, "Blue Island's water bill is higher than 39 of the 162 towns that provided information," which conversely means that you're lower. So if you're number 40, that means 122 towns have higher water rates than you do. So you're on the low side according to this. So that just shows you kind of where you're at. And then down below, there's a little graph that talks about the age of pipes. And you can see the dark shaded area showing that 69% of your pipes are greater than 61 years old. So 61 plus, that doesn't even give you an exact, it could be 100, it could be 110, I don't know what the number is. But you've got some old pipes out there. So that's a great handout. I'm glad somebody brought this in. I was gonna, I was gonna call it up on the screen, but since we all had the handout, I won't bother with calling it up on the screen. But again, you're one of the lower rates, and you've got very old pipes, which will kind of help out with some of the other discussion I'm gonna have. Again, this is gonna be a repeat for a lot of you. You've seen this before. I haven't changed any of the slides. They're the same slides. But I'm gonna go through it, and then we'll see what kind of discussion ensues. The first slide we had talks about days of cash on hand. And I know you've all had copies of this before. Again, it's all review for you. Days of cash on hand means how much cash do we have, and how many days will that cash last us into the next year? And so these are all as of the end of your fiscal, the last three fiscal years, December 31st, 2016, 2015, 2014. And I'm showing you the corporate fund and the water fund. Those are your unrestricted monies. You have other cash that's restricted for other purposes, like your motor fuel money or certain grant money, the police pension money. Those are monies you can't touch, okay? Those are for specific purposes. The water, this is the unrestricted water and general fund cash. And you can see at the end of 2014, we had a combined, if you add the two together, we had combined 8.8 days. And as I mentioned last time, I realize a lot of, a lot of families live paycheck to paycheck. There's nothing wrong with that. But that's not how a government can last. We can't be living paycheck to paycheck. We have to have some sort of reserve to be able to make our payroll, to be able to pay our bills. We have to have that money upfront. Now, keep in mind, the numbers here also include what's known as tax anticipation warrants. You had borrowed a million dollars at the end of '14 and a half a million dollars at the end of both '15 and '16. That money is part of this cash, but you had to, you have to pay that money back. You borrowed that against your next year's taxes, tax anticipation warrants. So even given that, we only had just over a week of cash at the end of 2014. We had about three weeks or so, if you look at that combined 21.6 days, about three weeks worth of cash at the end of 2015, and just under three weeks, about two and a half weeks worth of cash, if you will, at the end of 2016. So we had combined 17.7 days. Those are far below recommended amounts. And I, down at the bottom of the slide, you see GFOA recommendations. Again, this is a little bit of review, I get it. GFOA, that's the Government Finance Officers Association. They are, they come up with best practices, if you will, for governments. How much money should you have, how much money should you be keeping? Governments are not here to hoard cash and have millions of dollars like an investment bank might. That's not the purpose of government. It's supposed to be even some gain. You're supposed to spend all the money you collect, but you have to have some reserves to carry you into the next, into next year. So the GFOA recommends to have at least 60 days of cash on hand for your corporate fund, and then the water, 45 days. Now, that's operating when I say the water fund. I'm not even talking about reserves you need to have for capital improvements. You need to have reserves for capital improvements beyond the operating cash needs. We're in very poor shape here when it comes to cash on hand. So this is, this is what spurs on this discussion about raising water rates to increase our cash reserves. Our next slide gives us a water rate history by year. So this starts in 2007. It's basically the last 10, 11 years. The Chicago rate back in '07 was $1.33. The Blue Island rate was $3.71. So we have a little bit of a cushion in there to pay for our costs. And then you can see the different increases. So each time Chicago raised their rates, we raised ours. And the column that says excess change, that's the amount we raised beyond what Chicago raised. So you can see, we did that a couple of times, but the grand total of our increase beyond Chicago's increase was 62 cents. So Chicago raised theirs a total of $2.55. We raised it to two, a grand total of $3.00 and, I lost my place here. Just over $3, though. You can see, we went from $3.17. So we raised ours about 9.9% beyond what Chicago did. When Chicago raised theirs, 192%. So we, we are not keeping up, our raises are not keeping up with, even with the CPI, with the Consumer Price Index. The Consumer Price Index during that time was up about 16, a little over 16%, and we were only up about 10%. So we're not keeping up with costs. Our next slide is gonna be a little bit of a comparison to other municipalities. These were just some municipalities that we had access to their data. We did not have access to the full Chicago Tribune data at the time we put the slides together. The, and you can see we're, again, we're below, our rates are below average, okay? Our rate of $6.88 along with our sewer rate of $1.38 gets us to 8.26. And the average of the towns that are up here, $11.53. So we're well below the average of these communities. And as you can see from the Tribune, we're well below the average. So we have room for increases, even just to get back to average. And regardless of averages and whatnot, we're in a, we're in a poor cash position. Even if our rates were high, I would still be recommending an increase just to be able to pay our bills. That's not the case, though. Our rates are low. We need to be more average, if you will, in order to be able to have the resources to pay our bills and then to also do additional projects. Some of the, some of the future projects, potential projects, again, I'm not, I'm not saying we're gonna do each and every one of these, but I'm gonna click on the next These are, these are some of the potential projects. And these were just estimates that, again, through phone calls and whatnot, I didn't get any specific dollar amounts, just ballpark. And you can see that we're gonna have to repaint the Chatham Water Tower at some point in the near future. Our water meter program, we're supposed to be replacing water meters, and we haven't been doing a very good job of that. A lot of meters haven't been replaced in at least 15 years. There's also, most communities are using, maybe not most, but a lot of them are using radio reads so that you don't have to go out and read every single meter. The data is transmitted. Then there's a couple other projects with water and sewer main replacements. There's a lot of aging mains, as you can even see on the Chicago chart. Our pipes are old. They're falling apart. They need replacement. Where is that money gonna come from? It's gonna have to come from a rate increase. I'm gonna go to the next slide. This shows how our cash position is expected to change if we do nothing, if we don't raise the rates whatsoever. We're anticipating that our expenditures are gonna exceed our revenues by about $600,000 a year in the water fund. This is based on the amounts that we know today and the amount of collections that we are experiencing. So that just kind of gives you a picture of where, where will we be if we do nothing? The, the next slide is going to be what would happen if we increased the rates by about 12%? And we picked 12% because that would get us to just about break even, okay? And so our rate would go to $7.71 if we raised it 12%. The sewer rate would go to $1.55. Our combined rate would be $9.26. That's in the far right-hand side of the slide. We'd still be below the average of those communities that we looked at, but it would get us to just about break even. We'd lose, you know, maybe about $50,000 a year by raising 12%. The next slide I'm gonna go to would be what would happen if we increased it 18%. And you can see, we'd actually have some positive cash flow. Our, our water rate, instead of being the current 6.88, would go to $8.12. And the sewer rate would go to $1.63. The sewer rate is connected through the ordinance to be 20% of the water rate. So this is where the increase, the sewer rate would follow the increase of the water rate. And the combined rate would be $9.75. Again, we'd still be below the average, but we would, we would be providing at least a surplus of some $200,000 or so to the, to the water fund each year. The next slide shows an increase of 24%. Again, we would still be below average, but we would be providing about $500,000 a year now to the bottom line of the water fund, and that would be available. Now we can start thinking about doing some, some meaningful projects at this level. And then the next, the next slide is a 30, will be a 30% increase. You can see that the dollars increase even more. And then the last, the slide after that will be a 30, 30% water rate increase coupled with a 30%, or an increase to the sewer rate. Instead of having the sewer rate be 20% of the water rate, it would go to 30% of the water rate, just to give you different options here. And so this was the 30% increase with sewer rate remaining at 20% of the water. And you can see it rate, it increases the cash by 700,000 to 800,000. And now finally, we're, we're, our combined rate at this, this last slide of the 30% water increase coupled with the sewer rate being increased 30% of the water rate would get us just a shade above the average by nine cents and would provide us with over $1 million a year in additional resources in order to do these much-needed projects. And then I'm gonna go to one last slide here. This is a, what would the, what would the monthly utility bill look like? And here, we have, I know the Tribune used 5,000 gallons. We've got up here a 2,000 gallon, a 6,000 gallon, and a 10,000 gallon. So minimal user, an average or thereabout user at 6,000 gallons, and then a high-end user of 10,000 gallons. And you can see with no rate increase, and this includes the trash bill as well, right now at the, at the $2,000 or 2,000 gallon with no rate increase, they're paying $42.56. If you raised it to the, to the maximum we just talked about, you'd say, you'd see you'd be adding $6.72 to their bill. In the middle column right now, that 6,000 gallon user is paying, combining now, combining everything, water, sewer, and trash, they're paying $75.60. If we went to that maximum increase that we looked at, we'd be up to $95.76, or an increase of $20.16. And then for the high-end user, you'd go from $108.64 up to $142.24. Those are the, that's what would happen to people's bills at these different levels. So you can see there's a range there, obviously. Anytime you increase it, it's gonna increase somebody's bill incrementally. Those are actions that obviously you would need to decide on taking. And one of the things that came to me today was, was an old ordinance from 2006 that called for, but was not implemented. It called for increasing the rates in step with the Consumer Price Index each year. So each January, you would be a lot, the ordinance called for an increase, but the city never followed through on doing that. So you, so for the last 11 years, you, you had the power to, but did not increase the rates. And so that'd be something else you could kind of take a look at to say, hey, we, we could have done this all along, and something to possibly think about in the future. And I know you've got a copy, I left a copy for you of those, of those, of that ordinance. So that, those are, those are the items. Again, I know this is all review. We talked about this before. I'll, I'll stop talking now and...
Alderman, any questions?
I'm gonna go ahead.
Our trash rate, that is not linked to the water bill. I mean, they're included together, but if the water bill goes up 10%, 15%, our trash rate doesn't, it's not like the sewer rate where it's...
You're correct. They're independent of...
They're independent of...
Yes.
Okay. Because a lot of people are under the misconception that the trash rate is going to go up if the water bill goes up.
Yeah, no, that would have to be a separate thing, a separate decision that you would need to make as a board.
Any other questions? Over here, over Holly, Farwell, Austin, Thompson, Carr, Pittman. Before I open up for the public, right? Open up for public comment. I need you, again, we're trying to limit it to three minutes. Again, we're just taking information. So if it must come up, I need to name and address.
Marshall Lee, 2262, 120th Place. At the first special meeting, I said that I wanted to hear from Jan Osling, and you took that information. Still nothing from the Alderman.
Still getting information.
And in reference to the Tribune article on the 25th of this month, I wanted to encourage the citizens to read the article for themselves because it specifically talks about how the poor suburbs pay more. And it gives examples in this article, of course, it uses Fort Heights, but it says that the Fort Heights, for instance, pays six times more than Highland Park. And there are no Illinois regulators that have an oversight for the authority over the water rates. So I wanted to encourage my fellow, fellow citizens to read the article for themselves and come to some conclusions when it comes time to voting for our politicians. And again, this is my second request for Alderman, Osling to give her opinion on this increase.
Thank you very much for your input. Anyone else? I just need your name and address.
Mary Ann DeTerra's, 1831 New York Street. I have like a two-step question the CPA answered part of it. Whose fault was it that the water wasn't raised in steps with the increases from the city? And why wasn't this done each year to create a surplus so we wouldn't be in this predicament? Who was responsible for mismanaging that water account that they didn't raise it in small increments and then want to hit us with these large things? They had to know if they're in government and they ran for that position, or was appointed that position, that they needed a surplus unless they were that stupid and inept, I'm sorry, that they didn't know their job. And why should the citizens, all of a sudden, have to do 30% or whatever it's going to be? The next question is, is the golf course water bill. If the golf course water bill isn't paid by the golf course from the fees and the renting of the facility, why do citizens have to pay for their water bill for their pleasure? I'm sure maybe only 5% of the citizens use that golf course, and it's not fair to the rest of us to have to pay for that. And if the city can't afford it, or the golf course can't afford their own damn water bill, then maybe they should look into selling it and then raising the revenue and putting that towards the water bill so that citizens aren't paying for it, and it would repay back everything that we've paid. Thanks, Ed.
I'll just need your name and address.
My name is Rose Nagel. My address is 3040 141st Street. I'm new to Blue Island, been living here about three months now. And my only question is, and I brought it up last time, was the example that CPA, forgot your name, I'm sorry, used on the board, it includes the trash. And my main concern is if it's water that's gonna be increased, and it should just be the water. That was my main concern. Everybody keeps telling me that it's just the water, but the example we've got on the board is including everything. So I just want to make that point that it should, the example should just include the water, so maybe we wouldn't feel as crazy with that amount of money. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Carol DePace Marine, 2731 Orchard Street, Blue Island. And yes, the Chicago Tribune did an excellent job with their article, "The Water Drain and Environmental Injustice." Most importantly, what people need to clearly understand is that the city of Blue Island does not have an income, and it has been functioning off of the water fund. Each month, and I went through treasurer reports, each month, money is being taken out of the water fund. There is no such thing as a water public utility. In fact, there's no oversight for these water, municipal water utilities in the state of Illinois. It is in fact legal for towns to divert water for revenue for other purposes, provided the local officials deem the water system is being properly managed. In our case, our water system has not been properly managed, as evidenced by 69 or 61 year-old pipes. We should actually technically not be taking any money out of the water fund because it has not, our water system has not been properly managed. The city of Blue Island must now address that particular issue to get that into compliance so that they can in the future take money out of the water fund. Because it has been happening, I looked at the treasurer reports that I collected over the past several months. Blue Island's water bill has gone up yearly since 2013. So don't be under the impression that there have been no increases. As Chicago has increased the water bills to the city of Blue Island, the constituents and the consumers and the taxpayers have all had that rate increase pass along, passed along to them. The other thing that is really important for Blue Islanders to understand is that there is no regulation that says water has to be increased. Bedford Park, for example, charges $0.00 for water. Unfortunately, Blue Island is relying on the taxpayers and the water consumers to sustain the town. That's not how any community should be run. Unfortunately, that's where Blue Island's at. That's part of what needs to change. And as the lovely young lady pointed out, black, Latino, and low-income residents pay the most for water. That is unfair. One of the questions I asked all of the Alderman, all the elected officials was, where are the regulations and state statutes? No one could tell me. Of course, I also sent emails to the Tribune, and they did a wonderful printout. Did they do it for me personally? No. But I'm sure that I was one of many people who had a lot... But I'm sure that I was one of many people who had a lot of questions about what's going on with water bills in low-income communities like Blue Island, which has been declared blighted. One of the things we want to be very careful of is putting any additional financial burdens on the taxpayers we have. Right now, we have a large percentage of taxpayers who are on payment plans because they cannot afford to pay these exorbitant water bills. Is it necessary to raise to these limits? Of course not. Part of what needs to be looked at and seriously considered is, has been heard over and over again, we need a forensic audit, we need to find out where we're at. Blue Island needs to be restructured because we're paying too many people too much money. And if you restructure and you live within your means, you don't have to start looking at other ways to find money to pay a bloated city budget. Thank you.
I need your name and address, please.
My name is Mark Keener, live at twenty-two fifty Orchard Street. I think it's a little bit misleading that people keep referring to this as a water fund. There is no special bank account for a water fund. It is not designated money, as Mr. Meyer, you know, referenced earlier, that some funds are designated. They are special funds, collected for one reason and dispersed for one reason. This water fund is not like that. Mr. Meyer pointed out in his presentation at the first public meeting that the city four years ago arbitrarily moved salary money from other line items in the budget over to the water section of the budget. That problem has not been resolved. That money that you keep referring to as a water fund is just an item, just a line item in the budget that can be collected, that can be spent arbitrarily as the city council sees fit. So that even if we do increase the, the rates on the water, that that money is not designated to fixing our sewer pipes. It's not designated to fixing our flooding, and, and it's going to be paid for on the backs of low-income people. So I am absolutely against any kind of increase for this water rate because we have no way to determine what that money is going to be spent on.
Thank you very much. Anybody? I just need your name and address.
Good evening, Ron Bloom, twenty-four, twenty-one, Walnut. First, I'd like to, again, say thank you for holding these hearings. That is so widely important for matters facing our city. And this certainly is a very brave responsibility, as we talked about the importance of our water infrastructure and water use and water management. I offered comments during the first session. You know, this one is, is, and we think through this process, and it's a very brave responsibility. You know, and each of you signed up for that responsibility, so I appreciate you taking some diligent time to listen to the public and to, to assess the impacts in our community. You know, but from, from my pocketbook perspective, you know, it really comes down to every dollar that comes out of my pocket is a dollar less that I have to spend in this community to support the local businesses, to support the schools, to support the park events. And I'm sure that's true for families throughout our community. So as you consider this important question, that must also be considered as well, the impact to other parts of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I need your name and address, please.
Anywhere, Tanya Avila, at twenty-two thirty west one hundred and twenty-first place.
I just need you to speak up just a little bit more.
Tanya Avila, twenty-two thirty west one hundred and twenty-first place. My comments regarding the due process of this whole procedure, I don't think a lot of the residents were aware of the water rate hike to this point. I know the city of Chicago has a code where residents are required to have fifteen days prior notice with written mailing. And I know a lot of the residents don't even speak English, they speak Spanish, so I don't think a lot of them are able to communicate that way. So it would be nice if the Alderman did a better job of communicating to the residents of their work, especially the mayor.
Thanks very much. Any other comments?
What the Alderman feel about this?
There's no discussion for that, we're just taking information at this public hearing. Let me end it with this. Again, it's very important for us, again, to take this information that we have gathered here, and again, analyze the city's most pressing needs, and then come back to all of you, the public. We'll plan explaining what the city must budget, again, to how to spend, how we'll spend the money and provide reassurances, the money raised from any rate increase, will be spent on upgrades and necessary improvements to waterway works. Again, with the new city attorneys, I also want to point out that they have provided with me some information concerning a low-interest loan program sponsored by the Illinois EPA. And this program provides a means for funding some of the city's major infrastructure needs for its waterway works, and we'll be looking into that. Again, we'll be gathering that, more information regarding this program to determine if it's available to the city as a source of funding. Again, with that, we'll be back with some kind of a plan, and once we've gone over the notes that we got from the first meeting, the notes from the finance committee meeting, the presentation there, and this meeting. Again, I need a motion for adjournment. Motion by Alderman Farah, motion by Alderman Farah. All in favor? Thank you very much, all of you, everyone. Thank you very much.